Welcome to West Path. Planning Board meeting. Today is August 13th, 2024. Establishing the court, I'm Gabriel Whitney, sitting as chair. Jim Williams.
Jerry Mitchell.
Court was established. Are there any amendments to the agenda? No? No. Great. So we jump right in. First applicant is James and Sarah Justin with a preliminary sketch plan for mountain road. From Bruce Martinson from Sightline, I'm here submitting from my partner who's recovering from surgery. So we do have two projects I was handed. I don't know if that constitutes amendment to the whole agenda, but there's a second, a second plan that I think you've been provided for up the road. But the first one that we've already been here for is lots on the west side of the road. The tax map lot is lot 18. Am I sure I did that right? Yep, lot 18. And this is for Justin? Okay, so these are the same?
Yeah, they own two pieces of land.
Okay. So if you'd like, I can summarize, summarize the project or answer any questions.
Okay. So I'm looking at, you say that now there's two different subdivisions that we're doing?
Yes. The second one is on lot 20, which is up the road to the north.
All right.
So the preliminary ones that we've been here before for is on lot 18. Three lots.
Where is that identified on the plan? Which lot it is?
Well, it's these three.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, okay, so this is lot 18?
Right.
And this is also lot 18?
Yeah. That's the preliminary.
Okay. So where are the plans for the other subdivision?
I think they're in this part.
Okay.
Nope, it's this part, sketch. Because we're just submitting for sketch on the second one. So which one we start with? The preliminary? Consists of three lots, meaning all the ordinance provisions. The total area of it is 10.9 acres. We had some notes on things to edit on the plan, and those were taken care of. So we submitted updated plans that took care of all of those comments.
So what are you doing with the second parcel of land?
Well, it's a separate piece up the road. I think it's a similar configuration. Might only be two lots.
So what are these plans here?
Four lots, I'm sorry.
I guess I'm just trying to, what are these plans?
Well, we're not onto this one yet. These, one of our employees dropped off today.
Okay.
Includes this with the, you know, the written summary, which I think you've--
This is lot 18?
Yeah.
Okay. And that, what's the other one?
20, which I can just put out of the--
Okay. So when did you submit the information on lot 20?
Oh, 20, the sketch, I'm doing that right now.
Okay.
Today. Yep. Today is, I think--
I guess, just thinking about our procedure, and don't those things have to be submitted to somebody days before?
Sure, sure, yeah. I was basically an errand worker for these until an employee brought them all over here and dropped them off. Yeah, I was just to sort of say, I'm introducing this and dropping off the material, and my partner will be back to take care of that. So basically, the sketch plan application.
Okay.
I can go through this, but there's an introductory letter.
Jerry, I guess I'm wondering if we can, can we talk about--
I don't think so. I don't think so. So I think you have to publish those. Yeah, because they're different orders. Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we're talking about lot 18.
Yes. I apologize for the confusion. I was told this at about 2:00.
Well, you beat me by four hours.
When I went back to working on what I was working on, it was 4:00.
That's fine.
So we didn't come over at 4:00, so. Yeah, so that's fine.
Okay.
So I do have the notes from last meeting, last time we were here, the things to be added to the plan, and I can tell you they've been added. So you might have the notes minutes to tell you what we were going to do. And I know all of that was taken care of.
So why don't you run through the items that we, that you've added to the plan?
Okay. Added at delineation of H W L, high water line, and flood on the map. Because they do touch, yeah, they do touch the product code back there. Added the delineation of setbacks, added the local high water data chart, which is--
Say that again, the high water line?
High water data chart. Of course, my copy's so small, I can't read that. I think that's on page two of the plans.
So, so isn't the highest annual time higher in elevation than the high water line?
It can be higher and lower. It's, as we're told from D E P, H A T is something no one should be using because it moves constantly. Here's that chart, by the way. It wasn't on my box on the second page.
You're showing here high water line. And that's higher than the highest annual time. Which doesn't make any sense to me. The high water line, you know, is about 9.0, and the highest annual tide is 11.6.
The D E P definition of high water line is the change of vegetation, which is higher, almost always higher. I don't want to say always because they do coincide sometimes. The highest annual tide is an arbitrary chart that at some point Noah, and I think through D E P, was released to the state, and now Phippsburg uses it. And when you talk to D E P, they wish no one used it because it wasn't for the purposes of--
But you have to use it when you apply to them because they want to know what's above the highest annual tide and what's below it.
You have to show it, but it's not, they don't use it for any purpose other than information on what tide's going. Because every time they publish the thing, and they've stopped publishing--
No, they, when you apply, and I've done this many times, when you apply to D E P for permanent, they want to know what's above the highest annual tide and what's below it. So if you're going below that, with the pier, for example--
Oh, I see what you mean, your improvements.
Right.
Sure, but the, but the highest annual tide is just, again, just a reference line at a certain elevation.
It's 11.6, zero being the average low tide.
Yeah, yeah.
And 9.0 being the average high tide.
Yeah, yeah.
So you're showing high water line higher than the highest annual tide. So that, it makes no sense to me that the high water line would be higher than the highest annual tide. Because--
Again, the high water line is a change of vegetation that's present on the site.
Okay.
And--
Maybe you should put a definition on the plan about that. Because I'm confused about it. I'm sure other people--
Where did you get this chart from?
It was, it was in the, I picked up a packet the other day, and it was in my package. There's a few, there's two plans in there. I think that's the lot 20.
I think it's-- So it's in this one, this looks right. It just looks like that's a different chart that has topography. Apparently, these only have the first page. Sorry about that.
Oh, we can see that.
Yeah.
So maybe on your plan, you need to define what you mean by that.
Yeah. I just see that it doesn't say.
Because high tide mark is 9.0.
Yeah.
And that's above that.
Right.
Okay.
If you are, if you get someone from D E P to actually answer the question, they might say to you that the change of vegetation is the line from which the setback should be pulled.
Oh.
Yeah. It's a statewide thing, and I know a fellow in Coolwood should get caught on this, and we had to go down and measure what the state definition of the high water line was. And thankfully, he, the surveyor, didn't think it would say. But we all had the definition in our hands, and it was the change of predominant vegetation from predominantly saltwater to predominantly freshwater vegetation. So it's a vegetative line, if you can find it. And a lot of places where there's a cliff, it changes the relationship with the highest annual tide line when you look down at it. I can tell you that the D E P wishes the hat thing would go away. I can tell you--
They don't want to--
They know it has to do with--
They know it's a regulation.
Yeah.
Okay, so--
And we updated some of ours, which I think--
So I asked you to put a note on your plan of what you mean by that.
Sure.
Yeah. So on these lots, lot 1, 2, and 3, their ownership is going to go from the mountain road to the water.
Yeah.
Right? Is this going to be, I mean, will their ownership go into the low tide mark? Or is it going to go to highest annual tide? Or is it going to go to the high water line?
I think whatever--
I mean, the plan needs your shoulders.
Whatever the rights the Jostons have, they're going to give up between these boundaries.
And this plan is your shoulder.
Yeah, I can't answer what the deed says to whether it has the right language to go to the low tide or--
Well, when somebody divides the lot 3, unless this is recorded, or that plan's deployed in the S G D, then they'll look at the plan, and it needs to depict on what the deed's going to say.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
So--
I just personally have not reviewed the deed that Jostons got, and so I can't answer the question about how much further their rights go.
You know, when the planning board signs this, because they're signing off and it's recorded, and so--
Yeah.
So the plan needs to reflect what the deed's going to say.
Yeah.
You know, if it's going to, you know, and what the prior deed said. Because ownership in Maine and Massachusetts is supposed to go, you know, to Mingle Water, 100 brides, whichever comes to us, right?
Yeah, if the deed's right, yeah. Some of the lawyers now are saying that people have not properly conveyed from here to wherever low water is, and so the Jostons may only own the high water. And that's just lawyers making work, I think.
And also include whatever they have between Maine and--
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah, that's an A D D.
And the plan should, and that should be, and that should, you know--
So if it does extend--
The plan should reflect that.
Yeah, if it extends, we would extend those lines and say to low water. That's what we usually do on short-term subdivisions.
So, thank you.
Sure.
I'm not, I'm very articulate when it comes to these things, I guess.
Well, I knew that, but we were saying--
So I see on here some test bits?
Uh, yes.
Is that what these are?
Yeah. That's in the legend.
Yeah, okay. So these are acceptable for soils?
Yeah.
So I'll let you continue, thank you.
Uh, then I was going to say that according to Kevin, who's very optimistic, he said, "Project meets and exceeds all standards." That was a lot of things he put down for the bullet. But when I read off what I added, it was those, those four items. The water line, the setbacks. Do it both. The chart, which is here. Yep, and a couple of others, or one of the others. Try to block them all in camera.
So can you give me your name again?
Sure, I didn't, I probably didn't give it. It's Bruce Martinson.
Martinson?
Yep. And Kevin's partner, he owns Sightline.
Great. Is it Martinson or Martin E. or Owen?
Owen.
Just checking.
No matter what they try to do, Boston.
So the deed does stay on the east, but it east grants to the New Mexico. So it does--
They have a different parcel on the east side of the road.
This is the exhibit A that I'm looking at.
Is it two parcels?
Maybe that is the other. That must include the, that must include that.
Yeah, it's a pile of parcels.
What marks them?
Not yet.
Oh, okay.
I just noticed the water firmages are not listed, so. We will lay the loads. Some of them they are. So one at 300, one at 300 feet. So 460, so that's all. Must be a different layers.
Older plan.
Is that lot 20 or is that lot 18?
Yeah. Yeah, just hand her the notes up here. I do those.
Okay.
So how are these in mine?
Jerry, which one are you looking at, lot 18 or lot 20? Do you think it said?
Uh, 18, 18.
This one has it here, but it doesn't have the other two. So I called the box. I think that, I think that it's a layer thing. Oh, wait, no, no, that one's under it. So this one has it all here. All right. This is what we dropped off today, so that should be the-- Will you use that? Yeah. This one is a sketch. Wait, is this the other one now? Oh, crap, did I? Does it say sketch on the front? No. Not preliminary. Is there a plan on the back? But if I just saw this and that's the other one, right? Or is that the other one? That is the light side sketch. All right, this is the same map that I had before. Definitely some layer of it, but needed to know this. This, from this picture you were looking at, that's soil types. Okay. Yeah. I found it, just in the back of the pack. Yeah, this is the way, packet goes, just the same map that I'm missing. Yeah. But this is a preliminary, right? Uh, yeah, and I mean, mine doesn't even have, I have exactly the same map because someone made me know it's all. The fact that they're labeled in some drawings and not others means someone shut something off and then pre-did. And it's, yeah, a couple of different work times.
Yeah. Do you remember that plan that I passed to you?
Yeah.
The top of the ground, so I wanted to jump along.
Yeah. I think I have it so far. I passed it, cool, this to you. Maybe this is it? Yep, this is it.
That's it too.
This is as well?
Sheet two.
Yeah, all right, there we go. I'm sorry, there's still a line here crossing the road. Uh, well, this is pavement edge, and that's the other side of the town right away. The thicker one. Oh, that double. Yeah. Yeah, that's a cover to that. Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, great. Question is-- This one seems to be the one that has the most information on it of the ones we've seen. And it's-- Also a subdivision. Yeah. So both of them would get recorded. So it's lost, so three.
Okay, so I'm going through their letter item. Uh, this is general standards in our office. And Scotty on page 90. So I have a total of nine general standards, components of comprehensive plan. I have no questions on that. Landscape plan, I'm kind of curious, I mean, I have no issue with it, but let me see, any trees larger than 18 inches will be preserved to the greatest extent possible?
How do you get that, any what, 18 inches?
The tree is larger than 18 inches in diameter will be preserved to the extent possible? And why are you, that's in your letter to us. Why is that significant?
Uh, probably to Jostons, it's pretty wood, and I assume they wouldn't want it all clicker.
Well, how does that address the landscape plan requirements? Include the landscape plan will stop short preservation of any existing tree larger than 18 inches in diameter. Okay, that's fine. Other trees on the lot, any greater than 18 inches in diameter?
I haven't, I haven't been through there for 20 years, so I can't, I can't say. I've been across the road more recently, and I don't think there's anything close to that, but--
Why do we have that, Jerry? In our office.
Probably because you can't cut less than that.
That's a big tree.
More than that, yeah.
Eighteen inches. Okay.
You can only cut them when they go over, if it's the biggest ones. Go over first.
I'm thinking that's an item in the cover, about max.
Yeah.
Okay. So. Nine point four lots. Item D says, nine point four D, wherever possible, lot lines should be perpendicular to the street. And you state that they are perpendicular to mountain road.
As well as they could be done, yes.
Perpendicular means ninety degrees.
This is, this one's someone else's land, so this, this is an existing lot line.
I just think that. That's just an inaccurate statement that you're making in your letter. And you just need to revise that in your letter.
Okay.
On point four D, because they're inaccurate. And I. I think that the. I'm not sure how that, why that's in our office, either, Jerry, or you.
Only I agree with just, you know, trying to make, just make practicality, right? Make things straight. You get over forty-five degrees, people do the wrong thing.
Right.
Get houses over the line.
Just as wherever possible. And I guess you. If you say all proposed side lot lines are perpendicular mountain road, then you need to add something like.
Yeah.
You know, to the greatest extent possible or something.
Sure.
So where does the setback in this area?
That's the sign, I'm guessing?
I think it's fifteen from the side and I think it's. Twenty from the road, but. Twenty to twenty from the side, fifty-six from the road.
Oh, fifty-six from center?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And then just, you can put that layer, put that layer on again. It's on this one. Yeah, but I thought I read the labels that are on that one. Yeah. So I suppose if they're recorded, I don't think it's a clean or a DJM.
Yeah, because that has the bill. The building envelope.
This one does, yeah.
Does this? Label, because I have it here, it's on this, but it's not labeled.
That's what I'm saying, I think, I think it's easier to see it there, so in the little contours, it's not on this.
Yeah, that's fine.
So what are these then?
Those are the setbacks, they're just not labeled. The labels are easier to read over here.
Okay. Okay.
We can shut them off on that layer.
So I'm. I lost that with section nine.
Okay.
Can I move on?
Yeah.
I have a. Planning board subdivision preliminary plan application form. In the file, in the.
Package that you gave us?
And it's minus blank.
I have no. Sure. We didn't submit one earlier that was filled out for the last meeting?
Well, I'm using the office meeting package.
Yeah.
So should we run through the, uh. Even though his, the application form is blank. Well, maybe we should wait, actually, because he's. He needs to fill out, um, you know, whatever the plan includes, it was provided, and he's asking for waiver. That's part of the. Preliminary plan application form. That's just.
Yeah.
And so. You need to tell us if he's provided that, or if it doesn't apply.
Yeah, that's it.
For waiver.
It says it's included, but it's blank. And, uh, same as the checklist.
Okay.
What? Yeah, I actually thought you had a complete package and I was wondering why. No one ran out of the office for these, because I thought I was, he was making one for me.
Well, I think you can provide that on the next.
Sure.
Yeah, on the next.
Yeah, Kevin could do it. I, I don't, I have to say, I don't. I think it's wrong, but I, I don't have the soils work in here, even though it says attachment due subject design.
Okay.
Included, so that's another thing we need to bring you. Unless, again, it's already here, so.
No, they didn't have it, you guys didn't have it done last time.
Oh, okay. Then you could just bring it next time.
Yeah.
I think the butters might be messed up, though, Bruce too. I think it shows Richard. Lots of all those. Maybe just check the butters when you do it, when you bring it back. So you've got.
I know Milk Coke Development is right, because I've been working on the other piece, but I don't know about the aspect.
It, it's just not listed on this one. On the page, you know, I think that's right. Oh, I think that's, I think the survey's right, I just think it's not listed.
Okay, so Kevin worked on the survey, okay.
I believe that, I'm sorry, Jerry, I missed out on what you said there.
I think this is correct, the survey's correct. I think this is correct.
The listed's happy.
I think the listed, the listed, the list might be wrong.
Yeah. Through, uh, shoot, what is? This one, this is listed in the butters.
It's right after the D, I think.
Well, I thought the aspect's on the Jones and Rusk Trust property. That they. Drive them, you have to tell us, I suppose, that.
It's lot one dash one.
So it, yeah.
That's one dash one dash A.
Well, this is one dash one on your plan. Oh.
This plan says one dash one dash A.
Okay. Okay.
I have a note from Kevin that says that, I took care of the butters myself.
So then you need to.
Just check that, oh yeah. And then the only thing we should check, um, as far as the town is, if we sent out the right notices, right? Right, you have to notify the right people who are right and come to you. We told, we, we could just check that case and make sure that we, we notified the right people.
Yeah.
So who sent out those months to the town or that?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks to Suzanne. Suzanne's the one that wanted it, um, that the town started doing it.
Yeah.
You can thank Suzanne for that, okay?
So. Okay. So.
We'll wait to go through these checklists, huh?
Well, I mean, I, I think they need to indicate if they provided it, or they want a waiver, or.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's about us.
Or. It's not. Okay. They need to tell us that.
Yeah. And if we're not applicable, we give you a summary, we give you a ball of us, which is what we usually do.
Okay. So.
I think we go, my recommendation, we go through the checklist and see what's missing, right, in the list.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Well, the, um, okay, sure.
And.
We do that, but they haven't provided to us what. You know, they didn't send what they're gonna ask for, or a waiver and so forth. So how can we go, isn't that part of the checklist?
Well, we, yeah, we could go through that right now, if Bruce or Kevin want a waiver to tell us, right?
Kevin will tell you. He'll be very close to being here himself, which he was, but.
I think we could go through that list.
Okay.
I think, we'll try it, right?
He's handled, he's handled the whole thing, so I don't, I mean, if you ask me about particularism, these things, I may not even have an answer.
So should we just wait then for him?
I. I thought, this is something they got submitted with the application, if I'm wrong about that, I don't know.
This is their last, that's their application, and this is their initial one from.
Is it had all the involved, uh, all the. We can copy.
Here's this whole set.
Okay.
See if that's what you're looking for.
So I'm gonna start copying this stuff down.
You have it, oh.
Well, this is, it's a little bit different, right? This is for, that's for sketch, this is for.
Okay.
Preliminary.
Let me have, okay.
This is.
Oh, this is.
This is what they submitted originally. Back at our last meeting, right?
Yeah.
I found the whole packet they had, the application, and I just pulled what I saw that was upstairs.
Yeah. Alright, so that was just the sketch. Application, right? From last week? Okay. I'm pretty sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is a sketch plan application form. Which doesn't include the.
Last, last, maybe, yeah.
It doesn't include the, um. You know, this checklist for us.
Need a blank checklist?
The sketch plan application and the preliminary plan application are two separate. Items.
Are you telling me, or?
Yeah.
I, I just pulled, right, so I didn't, I didn't go through it.
Okay.
So this may, this may be your per checklist.
So Jerry, I thought it would be then to go through the.
There's another step, maybe we'll see if we can get it?
No, I don't think we need it, like, I'm just gonna fill this out, this is what Bruce, the packet with blank.
Okay.
I'll fill this out off of this, off of all this info here.
Okay.
Right, and then we could go down through, and then we'd have an approval. Shoot.
Okay.
Does that make sense to you guys?
Sure.
I think that makes sense.
This is, this is an April twenty-second, and this is a July twenty-second. There's two here.
Yeah.
Okay.
And one is the sketch and one is the preliminary.
I didn't even.
No, no.
No, it's.
Oh.
Yeah, it says it on the cover.
This is sketch. This is, but that has. It's got right title and interest and all that on there as well.
I see preliminary at the top of the application, yeah, okay. I did realize there were two different ones.
Are there any streams running through there?
Not that I know of, I think.
Are there any wetland areas?
I'd see, but I'd be curious if there's a cover.
Yeah, I think that's a root which.
Hopefully, yeah.
Yeah.
Looks that way based on the topography too.
And we had the wetlands guy out there, because he did the other piece too, and he found something in the other piece. But I don't think there's any here at all.
Something asked me, Jerry, if they go upstairs and afford to you.
So, I think all of this is the page one of this one. That made one photograph, I don't know. Or I can steal somebody else's. You know, how does it leave? Perfect, yeah. Okay.
Same thing, right?
But there's an approval one, there should be one before this one, right? No, maybe one, two, three, four. Okay, I guess we're just missing the approval letter, right?
Yeah.
I don't know if you have that anywhere, maybe we can get it.
But, I mean, are we, are we gonna approve?
And we'll do a, like, we'll vote on approval for preliminary.
Oh, okay.
Right? We'll go down through our list. And we'll vote on, uh, vote for approval or against approval of the preliminary. Right, Jerry?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. I'm not sure how carefully they really looked at our. You know, items. I mean, we asked for wetland areas. And we asked for slopes greater than twenty-five percent. And I'm not su, I don't see those referenced anywhere.
Yeah, we need to note that there aren't any, that's what we, that's what should be on.
With no slopes greater than twenty-five percent?
I don't think so.
None? Who's look pretty?
I can get that one.
Thirty-four or forty feet?
I'm sitting here making notes on the same stuff.
Sorry.
Maybe what we should be thinking about is have them come back and. With this thing filled out. And they should go through this and, and have the plan reflect, you know, what the items on this part.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, you know, and there are slopes that are greater than twenty-five percent. I mean, it looks like that the contour lines as close as they are.
Yeah.
It'd be, um.
We certainly should have a note that says there's no wetland.
And it says culvert's in drainage.
Yeah, I, I just noticed that too, that one culvert isn't on the property, but. It's adjacent to it.
But I imagine there'd be drainage then too.
Well, I think most of that probably refers to new, like, if you're building a road.
I would think so.
And we're not building.
Or a house, yeah. But it is along the road. Well, it's saying existing. Drainage.
Yeah.
And then maybe, like, you have the lines for the setbacks, but maybe just call them that, the bu, building envelope under T. Because that's another thing that we need, is the building envelope for each proposed lot, even though.
And so I, I think. The building envelope is the setback.
Okay, so then we'll.
Just a term.
So are we calling them different?
The setbacks altogether make up the building envelope.
The building.
Yeah. So since we're not building a road, I assume the soil erosion sediment control measures that are related to a road, where they're not applicable. Because someone might not build one of these for ten years.
Because someone might not build one of these for ten years, and like...
Which, which item number is that?
On your checklist, it's item number 21. And that's usually part of road design. Same with stormwater.
Yeah, I think that's right. Like, I think when they come back to get their building permit for the, that's when they would do that, I think.
Okay.
The applicants have provided to us in the past, uh, that, you know, what they're using for silk fence and this type of thing during site work and so forth. Isn't that a caper for us to...
I think it's if you're building a road. I think it's if you're building a road. Because we're not...
They're gonna be building houses, though, correct?
Yeah, the client's not building it.
And they're gonna be putting a foundation in and disturbing...
Oh, sure, yeah, yeah.
So...
But like Jerry, that's...
Just gonna say, it just says soil erosion and sedimentation control measures. So that it would include the road and everything that happens on the site. Not just the road, but it would also, you know, whatever your plans are for silk fence and this kind of thing around.
But yeah, we don't know what team's gonna build, where they're gonna build.
If you can tell us that you're gonna use a standard according to the state plan, blah, 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 whatever the state standard is. You can tell us what you'll use around the construction site. The silk fence or whatever, right?
Or if there's a drainage ditch, you know, if this goes both directions.
The intent of that is, the intent of that is so when the site is being disturbed, we don't have silt running into the ocean and waterways and so forth.
Again, the Jostelins aren't gonna build anything. They're just gonna sell a lot, and each person has to come in and talk to codes about the...
So in theory, so in theory, um, where these are in the shoreline zone, they have to come back to the planning board for their house lot.
Uh, not if they need setbacks, they don't need to come back to us.
They're supposed to.
No, not if they need setbacks, and we don't see them.
I think in the shoreline zone, I think they're supposed to. And then that's when I, but that's when I, but, but, but to Bruce's point, I think that's when the erosion, you know what I'm saying? Because someone could theoretically buy these lots and put them in conservation, right?
Right.
So I don't, like, they're not necessarily gonna...
Part of the subdivision requirement is that they provide to us what the erosion control measures will be when the site is disturbed. If it's disturbed, which we assume it will be built on. They need to, they need to provide those to us. And, and people have. But if it's within seventy, if, if it's more than 75 foot feet and they made all of the setbacks, we will not see them again. We, we won't have another opportunity.
Absolutely right. I, I don't know that I've got a client come to the planning board and went about with one lot they wanna build a house on.
I, I agree with you, yeah, a hundred percent, but they're supposed to.
No, I don't think so, Jerry. What you think about is when they're within that 75 feet.
And they want a marriage, they want to be like...
Fifty-five feet. You know, if they're...
Yeah. I'm only, I'm only that long. Anyways, anyways, I'm...
Well, we've had, we've had so many...
I know.
Uh, houses built and they...
Yeah, oh, I know.
So...
But I, I gotta agree with Bruce, like, I don't think, um, like, they could, they could, like, I think maybe that was all set up if they're gonna build a road in the subdivision, like Stevie's Road. Then I think they'd have to show what they're gonna do for, um, best management practices and stuff. That's what I think.
But we have seen other subdivision providers with, um, details on what they would do with a silk fence, et cetera, et cetera.
With no road.
You know, yeah, just around the building site. And the idea is still that there isn't erosion and silt and sand and so forth into the, into the lot. Although it's, it's not a hundred percent, obviously.
Right, right, right.
But there are...
You could add a note, Bruce, right, saying we...
Typically, we just say the, the best practices, best management practices that we use.
It just needs to be addressed somewhere.
Yeah.
That they will be provided.
Yeah.
So there won't be erosion from the, you know, the construction site.
Alright, so where are we now? Are we on, that was 21?
Yeah.
Are we on 22? Stormwater, stormwater management plan features? I would say not, not applicable, right?
Yeah.
So...
So I guess, when it's talking about the drainage ditches and like the culverts and whatnot, the reason I think they're saying that's important, I understand we're not putting a road in or anything, but by designating that, when they do put a driveway in, or if they are crossing that barrier, or filling it in just so they can access that, and if it is drainage, then that could potentially mess up people downstream and stuff, right? Because it's gonna rain in the road, it's gonna go into that drainage ditch. So by identifying that, we're saying, okay, if someone does do a driveway, then we need to see a culvert there. If that's where the water is draining.
Yeah.
So like, we...
But do you have a driveway permit ordinance, a driveway opening ordinance?
Driveway entrance permit.
That's it, yeah. That's typically where that's at.
The plan board isn't, I mean, we don't, we don't see that. If there's one required from the state, we wanna see it, but not within the town itself, not just the town for it.
Mountain's not the state.
But you have to go see the road commissioner.
Yeah, right.
And...
And he sizes the culvert and gives a permit.
Right.
Because you could have a 12, 15, you could have a 24-inch culvert, and it's figured out on the, I want my driveway here, they figure out what kind of culvert has to go in.
Right, but it's not where the, if there's drainage going through there.
Yeah, yeah.
But if, that's the road commissioner's forte, he'll...
And there's nothing in the ordinance, it has us to look at the site instances prior to...
Right.
There's nothing in that, that would be a good thing, but...
I don't think so.
But if you were building a road, and again, and we're designing ditches and stormwater catches and all that stuff, there would certainly be, I'm sure, a sidewalk before the preliminary road was approved. Probably with codes and the road commissioner, and if they said that's not a big enough culvert, it would be swapped out at that time. But these are individual driveways. I mean, one guy can buy all of these lots, we see the craziest stuff now. And they build a McMansion, and then they don't want anybody next to them, so they buy all three.
Okay. That culvert on there that's shown on the plan, that's responsibility of the county to maintain anyway.
But we should label it, though, as a, as a culvert, so it's like...
Sure.
Because it's part of the existing drainage.
That's not, yeah, so just say existing town culvert.
Yeah, put a...
Yeah. So we don't, so we're not really...
I just want on the list of, in saying, show the existing drainage. But if that's...
That's really what the contours are for until something gets built.
Okay.
If something were sitting there that had a parking lot and it had a ditch system, we'd have all that on the plan.
So the water does come from the lot, uh, easterly towards the road, which is why that comes, so...
The height, yeah.
You can see the, how the water drains. It goes from the contour of 78 to, uh, 60, 60. Or actually, I guess that's 58. So that drains down everywhere across the...
On the east side of the road, right, no, it goes right down into, um, I don't know if that's Amco or...
So should we go on to the next page?
Yeah.
So we need an application. And, uh...
Do you want us to start?
I, I fill one out, that one.
Okay.
And, uh...
How's it gonna say provided by, Jerry?
Notification right into all of, to all owners of the body of property.
Yeah.
And, uh...
I think...
The approval sheet, we have a road.
I think that's a John, that was...
Or another staff?
No, I think it would be any of this stuff inside.
This is from his office.
Oh, yes.
If there's, I can go, there's another staff in there, it is, I can go and get, that's the April one.
No, I think it's just a generic form.
Yeah, and if we're, if we're doing this, I would rather we do it all again. And submit once instead of trying to patch it together. Because we gotta do it anyway.
Okay.
Great, but thank you.
I'm here to help if I can.
Can you do something? If you felt that much, you know.
I've done my homework.
Honestly, is solid waste private? What's that?
Yeah, higher.
I guess, I mean, I've been through this, I see, I mean, there's information underneath, and the application needs to be filled out and so on and so on, but I have no...
Yeah, that's the, that's the thing. The blank.
You want a blank one?
I don't, go ahead, Jerry.
Sorry, I just realized that I saw the approval on there.
I have no qualms of, uh, making a proposal that we accept this preliminary plan subject to these, uh, other items that we discussed and that we wanted to divide.
Alright, I'm gonna do that.
And so I make that motion that we, we accept this.
Yeah, so I think we need one of these before you do that, I'm just beginning, Suzanne, if we can get a blank on these, I think. Just a blank, that blank form, I think.
I'll see what I can whip up.
I, I brought one. Everything I brought was...
No, I don't think the approval letter, though, I mean, I brought that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, all I can see was, I'm sorry.
So the question is, are we going to, uh, have a public hearing at our next meeting? I mean, this is really straightforward.
Yeah.
And I mean, you're talking about all the details and so forth, and they're only provided, and, uh, with this, a few holes and some of the details they need to provide us. So, um, I, I, you know, to move this along to the upcoming, well, um, you know, I propose that we, first, we have a motion on the floor to accept this as a preliminary plan.
A second.
Okay. Um... Okay, in comment, right?
Yeah.
So...
Any more discussion, or...
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, comment or discussion, I would say. Alright, so it would be approved preliminarily for all of these little things that we're...
With all, with the conditions, right, and the conditions.
Yeah, as far as the overall idea.
Right.
It's looking okay.
Right.
Okay, yeah, alright, so all in favor?
Okay.
So, maybe initially...
So then the next question is, uh, do we, do you anticipate for our next meeting, if you have all this information?
Absolutely.
And...
If I have my way through here tomorrow, it'll turn me, I have a call.
So, uh...
We want to write down a list those were all clear on the list.
Okay. And...
You have, you have a list going. I have two different lists, but yeah.
So, we can have a public hearing, we've noted that in our, and we have a public hearing. Just try and, I mean, our regular meeting, so our regular meeting is at six, we could have a public hearing at quarter to six, I don't know. But they can, we decide. And, uh, I mean, I don't expect it to be controversial or anything.
No, I think so, it would be here.
So...
Why don't we keep, why don't we keep it at six, a hearing at six, you wanna do that?
Okay.
Just for, so we all meet at the same time.
Okay.
And then, I would prefer one late, but let's do that.
So would you like to make that a motion?
Yeah, so we'll make a motion that we have a public hearing, um, at our next meeting, which would be...
We'll get it along with Max, I think.
September 10th?
Yeah, not the, the next regular meeting, September 10th. Of a public hearing at six o'clock.
And then the regular meeting of the plan board to fall. And so... So essentially, what you need to do is just to fill out that, you know, complete that preliminary plan application form, and...
Which I think's right there, yeah.
And then go through this, that we should provide and not provide and so on. And then, uh, is there a final plan? Is there an application for the final?
Yeah, yeah.
So, so you need to do that, too.
Yeah, actually, there's one down the back, Gabe will be down the back, sorry.
But if you go through all the things we've checked out and talked about, then you'll be all set.
Yeah.
And maybe you could hear this. And I understand, we don't need something that needs to be in our letter that says, this is why we need this.
And there is the question on the slopes and...
Yeah.
Wetlands and...
Those are the things I put with red circles on.
And there's also the question of, um, the, you know, the, you know, soil, uh, we can't...
That's good.
The, uh...
The erosion plan?
Yeah, the erosion plan.
A note about best practices.
I think I would have, I think I had a motion out, right? Okay?
Yes, so, sorry, your motion was to...
To have a public hearing on the September 10th.
Right.
Planning board meeting.
Planning board meeting, six o'clock, and then followed by a regular meeting.
Going through the...
I'm sorry.
Alright, all in favor? Alright, discussion, comment, all in favor?
Okay.
Okay.
So, yeah, so we need that sort of an erosion control plan. And we need more than just a one-line statement. Um, usually, things are provided to us, you know, specifics on what they would use for silk fence, uh, hay, or, uh...
I, I feel...
It's just a generic thing.
Yeah.
It's just so that they're...
We have that kind of plan ready to go, it's just that, it's associated with a road every time we submit it, so I'll let Kevin...
Well, we, I mean, this doesn't say just the road, it says the site. And there'll be a lot of disturbance of the soil. I mean, if there's a, you know, 28 by 80 house, you know, that's a lot of, that's a lot of soil disturbance. Plus all around, and, you know, so that's the concern, it's just that...
Yeah.
There is a planning place, so there isn't, uh, so...
There wasn't a problem with the road, it was bad.
Sure, I did, here's, here's my, here's my thought on it, and I'm not being argumentative. The Jostelins could sell all these lots, nothing happens for five years, the Jostelins pass away or move somewhere else, they don't own it, and then someone comes in and builds.
And they'd still be subject to this approval.
Sure, well, it'd probably be something more restrictive, but the codes, the codes guy would have it as part of the building permit.
Yes.
So, I mean, we can say best management practices will be used, you know, in anything that the Jostelins do, but once it gets out of their hands, it's between the codes officer and the builder. Because, because nobody...
There is that, there is that check. But part of the process of a plan board is that the developer is well aware of what they need to do so there aren't erosion issues. And they just ask that they save that.
Yeah.
Well, there's no harm in them saving it, because that's what they would want, but when they move, when they're done, they don't own it, there's nothing they can do about it.
Ten years ago, or twenty years ago, whatever it was, the DDP went through a big program, and people got certified to develop social erosion control plans.
Oh, yeah, that's what we do.
And, yeah.
Yeah.
So, uh, you know, so when a contractor goes in there, uh, they, they should know full well what they need to do.
Yeah. And one thing we have to, if you could just check on their butters, and make sure that's on the list.
Oh, yeah, we throw that on.
And then, and Tracy, we can check on that on our, and make sure that we got the right butters to do that.
Right.
The, for the notices. Alright, so Suzanne finds that, we're all set, I think, it's all approved, right? If Suzanne finds that approval letter, right, Gabe will sign it, that page one, for the preliminary.
Okay.
Right, that's what Suzanne's looking for right now.
Okay.
You could find this one. We'll have to get the approval letter after.
Okay.
The preliminary one, we'll send, we'll scan it and send it to you.
Okay. There is a section in the ordinance on page 95 that talks about surface drainage. And, uh, the developer shall provide a statement from the designing engineer that the proposed subdivision will not create erosion, drainage, or lot problems in either, even in the subdivision or in other properties.
Which, which item is that?
Page 95, it's, um...
Page nine?
E3. 9.4, E, no, I'm sorry, 9.6, E, talks about surface drainage. Nine point four, E, no, I'm sorry, nine point six, E, talks about surface drainage.
So this is.
Okay.
Um, Bruce does, yes, yeah.
So.
So just respond with that, please, to be signed. Oh, okay.
So.
Oh, thanks.
So you're all set on what you need to do then for the next meeting?
Yeah, okay, and I'm never going to. And I text him, literally in bed, and I'm texting him and saying, what the hell do you mean, that whole thing? So, he has some details to cover. And he, he said something about this, if we can talk about it, you know, it's your agenda.
No, that's what I think Jim was saying before, is it has to be on the.
How do we get that?
Yeah.
For a sketch.
So you have, we can't take any action on it, because.
No, no, I.
Let me just finish.
Yeah, yeah.
So, but we're happy to answer your questions and this type of thing and so forth, but we can't take a vote or approvals or anything like that, because it doesn't need to be published, you know, in the notice and public notes.
For the sketch plan, the other, okay, yeah.
At least, it has to be on the agenda.
Okay.
But if you have general questions, we can, we can talk about those.
I only have one question, can I show these as an official application?
As your application.
As long as the application has been filled out, yeah. All right, this is the one I was reading, but it was more interesting, no, that's fine, forget it. Oh, my, what's the red sauce? It might actually do that.
There you go. So if you do want it to be on the agenda, but other than, you know, talk about contract and, so, you know, make the application.
Yeah.
We can.
Do we get?
Agenda, and after, so after we, you know, work on this particular one, we can work on that second one.
Yeah, so is the submittal date, uh, three weeks prior? I think it used to be, but I thought it was less than that, but.
I thought it was nine days to get it on to the.
Okay.
But I don't wanna, is, would, do they want to?
I think they, they extended it.
Maybe sixteen days?
Yeah.
I thought it was maybe, yeah, just over two weeks.
It was sixteen days to get on the agenda and enough public notice time, I believe.
Yeah, and that probably, working on forensic, which is probably three, three days, so. I'm gonna grab one.
So.
I think sixteen days was the reason.
The thing, aside, Jerry and Dave, that we should, I'm not sure what we need of sixteen days. I think we need, there needs to be a gap there so that we can publish in the paper during gender, et cetera. But I don't know if we need that.
I think the sixteen was to establish in two weeks.
Notice.
Notice for anybody who wanted to.
And then can I have the extra time because of the Tuesday schedule for our meeting, for some reason, I was saying it was something.
What I'm thinking about, though, is that maybe we can just start showing that, so. I mean, this seems to be out here.
I think it was, I think one was to give, um.
Right.
Notice to the newspaper and two week timeframe.
Exactly, and if forensic is three weeks, then we're doing. And, and you're mailing it to some people who are out of state, right? Yeah, yeah.
Not looking.
And maybe she, she thought it'd be twenty-two days.
Twenty-two.
So, we'll figure it out and talk about it.
Okay.
Yeah. So you said you got them tomorrow?
And he leaves here.
So when you come in.
If you have a month, yeah.
But he'd read that and say they have a petition.
Yeah.
When you come in in a month.
Yeah.
Bring everything in a complete package.
Right.
And so we don't have to go back and try and find and.
I, we.
It gets very, it gets very confusing as to what we're just looking at, it drives me crazy, frankly.
All right, as far as I do, you already had tonight's packet, and I don't know why this young guy ran over here with a bunch of packets that I don't like. Yeah, we picked, my wife picked mine up yesterday.
Okay.
So there's a stack of packets upstairs, I just did that one day before, I didn't bring it down.
So I, I had picked out mine. Does it have any of the checklist filled out or the application? No, yeah, okay. Kevin was probably in serious medication when he was betting that, so, but we could, we could have this packet back complete tomorrow.
Okay.
And then work on the sketch plan for the lot twenty. That way, if you all pick things up from time to time, it'll be ahead of time, and, you know, feel free to yell at us, but, but I think we'll have everything you want. And since Kevin's not there, I'll tell everybody to, to do it tomorrow.
Okay.
And certainly communicate with Tracy to, to find out what the agenda schedule is, to make sure we're trying to get on that, on this agenda.
Yeah, they won't show, you won't see two weeks packets at the same time.
You could, in theory, you could do, can you, too?
No, I would make them separate by day, so they stamp them in and they're different.
You're all set?
Yeah, I'm good, okay, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Bruce.
Good to meet you.
So, public information comments next.
Yeah, any public information or comment?
You'd be the only one on the public side.
This is your chance, and us.
So, do you, should we have, and we'll be trying to find some upstairs, blank files in here for approvals and stuff? What do you guys need to make this easier? Because for me to go upstairs and try and screw around and find stuff.
In the past, um.
If they're coming in for, for a preliminary or a final, there's that approval that's, that top one, and that was always like the top sheet on the packet.
But I'm happy to set up a library in here for whatever you guys need.
I think that's all we need is that blue sheet.
Yeah, because that's just essentially our notes of what.
And you need these blank forms in case someone doesn't have them or check this?
No, no, usually that's part of the application, right? So it's just that.
Okay.
Yeah, usually.
That would be solid.
Yeah.
I, I didn't know what I was looking for, I couldn't find a blank.
Yeah, no, it's, it's.
Put something in there.
Yeah, sort it out.
I think Jonathan has a file.
I wasn't gonna screw it through, because.
Donnie used to have a big binder, and she would pull one out.
I don't.
You get it, yeah, exactly.
But we can, I mean, we can set up something in here if you want that.
Yeah.
Or it could be.
His room.
Yeah.
It'd be nice when the file comes to us, you know, for consideration, that, that approval form be on top. Yeah, I would then gave all the eyes who was filling out and signing it, it's true.
And then we'll have a copy of working to make the copy, and that everyone's working either.
Okay.
The only other business I have is, remember that guy that came in that time, wanted to be on the planning board, was right in the midst of the crooker? John gonna reach out to Carly to see if he, she had his contact info, I don't remember his name, but you guys remember that?
Yeah, yeah, we have to go back to the.
How long ago was it?
It was a while ago, I'll reach out, back out to John and see if he, if we know.
Now, the fellow was on the board for a while, and then resigned, that is James Ross.
Correct.
Yeah, I don't know the other fellow's name.
I can't remember the.
It might be in the minutes, actually.
Whiskey, remember, it's.
No.
No, he was a member of the public, but it would be on the video.
And it should be in the minutes.
It was probably two, three months ago.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll go, maybe I'll watch them for the videos.
So, I don't know, you'd be good now.
Yeah.
Another one or two, just so that.
And you have one, then you can have a tie-up.
So that if one of us doesn't make it, then.
Right.
You know, can't make it, because right now, a lot of us can't make it, but we don't have any.
Yeah, just postpone for later.
I, we always avoid everything, except for one application. Okay.
Uh, other business, any other business? Okay, approval of the minutes.
Nah, what about, did, other business, did you send in that approval letter, that one? For Croker's parking lot, did you ever sign that one?
Um, I believe so, yeah.
Okay.
I think he brought it. Uh, yeah, I think it was part of this one.
Remember, we had to determine, make some changes and so forth.
Yeah.
It's actually in the minutes here, hold on.
So that's.
Yeah, I think it's in this one, right? Yeah. Good. Yeah.
Okay.
This is the.
Look at the last paragraph on the second page.
Okay, I just gotta remember if he sent it.
Yeah, I, yeah, because we, uh, I'm, I'm pretty sure.
Okay.
Because that was the main thing I was looking for, we told him to make the changes. And that, I would have looked for it again, to see if it's not signed, then that would be the reason why. If it is signed, then it was changed.
Okay.
So are, are you guys good with the minutes?
Yeah.
Jim? Okay. Um, so minutes are approved, well, all of the minutes being approved, great. Next meeting date, September tenth, well, that's our next planning board, but we have a meeting next Tuesday to meet with Max.
Yeah.
Right? I'll check that on my calendar. Yeah. Okay.
Okay, Jim, you're good, on next Tuesday?
Yeah, I'll be here.
Anything else?
Cool.
I'm good, the adjournment motion?
Second.
All in favor? All right.
Perfect.
And.
And Tracy, her first planning board meeting.